Hi, everybody. Welcome to our third GNCIM session with Dr. Taylor. I'm gonna go ahead and let them start.
Right, fantastic. So I've got myself a little list of a few things to do while I've got a screen and everything. So I'd actually asked my classes what questions that they had. And so I've got polarity and intermolecular forces up here because those were the two biggest topics that I saw. But one of the things that that reminded me of is I've also been having some chats with folks about where things are. So I am in the ebook, so I'm in Alex and the ebook. And when you are in the ebook, granted, it picks up wherever you left off. But for example, if I'm looking for chapter eight and I want the end of chapter questions, those are in fact called things like questions and problems. So what I did to get there is I go to the contents menu and then I find for whatever chapter I want the questions and problems. And then they're, they have different subcategories. So it says review questions. It says conceptual problems. It says combustion analysis for section 8.2, which we're not covering on the exam. It says section three calculations with balanced chemical equations. We are covering that. So when you are trying to find the end of chapter questions, the textbook calls them questions and problems. And the textbook also calls them for chapter eight, they're all 8.1, 8.5, 8.27, whatever the numbers are. When we have listed them in the, when we've listed them in the sections, they're just said 1, 2, 3, 4. So I was end of chapter questions, that PDF file. Instead of for chapter eight, instead of saying 8.3, 8.4, 8.8, it just says 3, 4, 8. In the textbook, the textbook is going to say 3.8, 3.8, 4, 8.8. So that's just a difference to be aware of when you're looking at the end of chapter questions. Because I definitely looked at those. I had to write, I did write almost all of, I did write all of mine over the weekend. That's great. A little more last minute than I really wanted. But that's what happened to me. So that was one thing is where the end of chapter questions are. The other one says to show the videos. So I think it does take more clicks. So in my infinite spare time, I might try to set this up, but in the 701 section, there's a folder that says pre-recorded lecture videos 2020. Now, these are olds. These are older from 2020. But do you know the intermolecular forces have not changed? So there's a folder that says chapter seven. And granted, it says part one, part two, the parts are kind of out of order. But there's a whole video. I made all of these. And so if you just want to talk about the polarity of molecules, you can. So there's a molecular geometry video and you're going to log in to Microsoft Streams. And look, I had bangs. But that's, that's, so these are all there. So if you would like just to hear everything over again, or if you want to see me do it from scratch, you guys all have access to these. That's why they're in the 701 section. So it's also I'm going through them here in the exam review. Everybody has these. Everyone has access to these. So there's a couple clicks. You will have to log in with your net ID and password. But they've been hanging out that whole time. So I think I might have been cheating and saying something like, hey, guys, if you have access to it in e-learning, like just click on it. It's there for you. But these were also there for you. So those, those videos are there. What else is on my list? Review material on the exam found on the syllabus. So this is just to remind you guys, because I don't think Dr. Deekman usually sends out an announcement about what all is covered. But he's, he's been traveling around a bit. So I'm looking for the syllabus. Because we are actually, well, there it is. Because we, whatever's on the syllabus is what is on your exam. So I'm always scrolling through to find the schedule. So this, this page that has some yellow highlights and some orange highlights, this is, this is the schedule. It's on page five, five of the syllabus. And it says exam three, chapter seven, eight, 12.2. So seven is all the shapes. Seven is intermolecular forces. Seven is hybridization. Seven is line angle formulas. Seven is bond angles. Seven is all of that good stuff. 12.2 is properties of liquids. So whoopsies, wrong thing. Right thing. So properties of liquids is 12.2. So for, so honestly, we, we added that one in there because properties of liquids goes right along with all of the intermolecular forces. So some folks, I think in my sections, because I don't actually have it labeled, chapter 12.2. So it just seems like it's part of chapter seven, which is why it's there. And chapter eight, chapter eight is balancing chemical reactions. Stoic geometries are going in between different grams to moles conversions and chemical reactions and limiting reactants. And I think that's it. Yeah, that's it. So chapter eight's really just three things. I don't need PowerPoint help for Mac. So that's, that's what this section is covering. We're actually running on schedule. So that's, that's all it is. Okay. And then I had my little list of things to talk about was polarity, intermolecular forces, properties of liquids, and then chapter eight, if I had time. So that was kind of my little show and tell, which everything's coming out of the 701 section. So everyone has access to the things that I was looking for and the things I was looking at. I will also take a moment just to remind y'all of what, when your final exam is, your final exam's on Wednesday, December 11th, by the way. Don't forget. Is it really the right day? Okay, anyway. So mark calendars. Don't forget the final. Right now, we're more concerned with exam three. Also a reminder that this is at 10:00 AM. Today. Oh, let me grab, where are all those lovely room assignments? Room assignments. There they are. So if you guys have not seen your room assignments in a while, there's your room assignments. Yay, they're the same. They're the same. They did not change. They are, they are the same. That's the goal, honestly, is that the room assignments are the same now on the final, on exam four, the same. But some of y'all are still having some fun finding green. Let me actually say, I'm still having a time looking for the signs to find the green 2.530. I still have problems finding that room. I do. So. And I go to it like three or four times an exam. It's great. Okay, so let's go ahead and see if there's any questions in the chat already. Otherwise, I've got my list if there are none.
We don't have any questions yet.
Okay, cool. Then moving on to polarity. So when it comes to polarity, actually, I want to grab something super specific. So there is, so first of all, anytime we talk about polarity, also, I did not make this. This is from Dr. McCord at UT Austin, who is much better at drawing stuff than I am. Although if you're in my class, you know that I'm bad at drawing things. Not very high bar. So I personally really like this organization of all of the electron domains and molecular geometries. There's a whole bunch of different tables and different ways to think through this. So this one does not have to be your favorite. It's just my favorite. And shows them all on one page, which is pretty handy for me. So one of the things to keep in mind when you're doing polarity is the idea is to think about, is everything even? So whenever we're talking about polarity, what we're really trying to ask. So whatever we're doing, seriously, whenever we're doing polarity, we're trying to ask, is the electron density evenly distributed? And if it is, if it's completely evenly distributed, then we call that non-polar. So this means that we could still have polar bonds. But if we have nothing but polar bonds and there's nothing else to cancel them out, then we might very well have perfectly evenly distributed electron density. So it's entirely possible to have some of its non-polar as molecule, but have polar bonds. So the other thing, though, whenever I'm looking for polar molecules, whenever I'm looking for polar molecules, the first thing I actually look for is I actually look for lone pairs. Let me show you why. So this one is bent. And this is trigonal pyramid, and this is seesaw, and this is square pyramid. These are all molecular geometry shapes that have one lone pair somewhere on them. One, just one. Because they have one and just one, there's nothing that is of equal electron density to cancel out the lone pair. So I don't care what else is attached. I don't care how close it might come. When there's only one lone pair, we assume that all of these, with only one lone pair, all of these with only one lone pair would be polar molecules. So only one lone pair, nothing can possibly cancel it out. They're all polar. Again, and I know some of y'all are like, oh, but what if it was super close? This is also that part where, because we're asking y'all to analyze molecules based on drawings, based on your own drawings of your own Lewis structures, we're not going to care if it comes really close. You're going to do your best and basically say, ah, if I have one lone pair, nothing's going to cancel out one lone pair. So that's just going to be polar by default. Then I have some other cases like bent and T-shaped. And T-shaped actually is in two different places because you can get it from two different electron domains. So it could have two lone pairs or a different T-shaped could have three lone pairs. But regardless, these also bent and T-shaped are also always polar. So these other ones are also polar. The ones that are highlighted are also polar. Because again, those lone pairs are not canceled out in that particular way. Which yes, does mean you have some other ones that might be polar, but it depends, might be non-polar, but it depends. So in square planar and linear, those are the ones where the lone pairs, the lone pairs cancel out at least. So square planer and linear lone, the lone pairs cancel. So square planer and linear, those lone pairs do cancel out. That's actually why we get back to a linear geometry. Is because we are assuming that anytime it says linear, we really do mean that those atoms are therefore in a straight line. And since they are therefore in a straight line, all of those lone pairs are canceling out perfectly. Is the assumption that we're making. So square planer also has one lone pair on the top, one lone pair on the bottom. So those also cancel out. And then you have the set that don't have any lone pairs and all of those have are just bonds. So then we have to worry about bonds still. So this hopefully, so what we've talked about so far is just analyzing for lone pairs. Personally, I find that this is helpful. Because when we analyze polarity based on lone pairs first, if all we really care about is, is the molecule polar or is the molecule non-polar? This can give us a quick yes or no answer if that's what we're looking for. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't still have polar molecules, even if the lone pair is canceled. So let's take an example, actually, let's look at a trigonal planar example for a molecule. Carbon double bonded to oxygen and then single bonds to hydrogens. This has that lovely double bond. So this has one polar bond here. But we're going to assume that carbons and hydrogens are non-polar. So since there is a dipole moment in between the carbon and the oxygen, we are just going to assume that this whole molecule overall is polar and has a dipole moment. So this molecule does is polar, even though there's no lone pairs on carbon, right? So no lone pairs on the central atom, no lone pairs on carbon, but the central atom, but the, the whole molecule overall is polar. We could do a different example. And whoopsies, I did write a little finer than that. Okay, I've gotten kind of spoiled using the tablet, the big fancy tablet in the classroom. I have a tablet here at home. It's not, it's not as fancy. We're going to look at boron trifluoride. Now, what you might notice here is there's no lone pairs on the central atom. Also, quick reminder, boron is one of those things. I want a periodic table. I'm looking for the periodic table. Would like to grab this periodic table. Exam three review. What's I doing? So a thing to remind y'all is that boron is one of those exceptions back from exam two that we do expect y'all to remember. So boron and beryllium were kind of those exceptions to the octet rule, where you could have basically sharing six electrons. And beryllium was the one where you could only needed to share four electrons. So three bonds for boron and it's satisfied, two bonds for beryllium, and it's satisfied. So my boron here, boron trifluoride, this is its Lewis structure. I did try to draw it so it looks kind of like its shape. There's no lone pairs on the central atom. And I do have these lovely fluorines. So there, there are polar bonds in here. Let me draw that a different color. So there are in fact polar bonds in between the boron and the fluorine. So those fluorines are much more electronegative than the boron. But what you might notice is that this particular shape, all the fluorines are basically pulling that electron density away from the boron. And there's no lone pairs on the boron. And this lovely trigonal planar geometry is going to be this beautiful, perfect 120 degrees all the way around. So those actually all cancel out. The electron density is relatively evenly distributed. There's going to be maybe a little partial positive charge on the boron, maybe. But it's a pretty small molecule. And it'll, it'll all cancel out because all of the fluorines are pulling exactly the same amount. So this one, we would actually go ahead and mark as being non-polar. So a lot of times, the, and the, and the difficult thing with any of this is oftentimes when people are looking at polarity, they want it to be quick. They want to do a quick analysis. And the hard thing is sometimes you can't. So, but not always. And what I mean by that is this boron trifluoride, there's no lone pairs on the central atom, no lone pairs on boron. And all of the atoms around it are the same. That's non-polar. So no lone pairs, same atom attached to the central atom, non-polar. Very similarly to how if we had something that was bent, which doesn't matter which kind of bent, but we can draw water. It's got lone pairs. It's bent. Lone pairs on the central atom that don't cancel out is it's not the square planer. It's bent. This is going to be polar because of the lone pairs. And yes, you could also analyze the bonds because it's also polar because of the bonds. But you could just look at the lone pairs and tell me that that's polar. And that works just fine. This guy, though, this carbon with the oxygen, this one requires a little bit more thought because there's no lone pairs on the central atom. So it might be non-polar. But then I have to actually go through and analyze what bonds are connected to carbon. And the carbon to hydrogen is non-polar. So I'm not worried about it being polar because of that. So the only thing that's left is the carbon to oxygen. But that carbon to oxygen is polar enough to go ahead and call the whole molecule polar. So polar versus non-polar always sounds like, ah, this should be really fast. And the difficult thing is, is that it can be, but it might not be. And that it might not be is what makes polarity oftentimes a bit confusing. Because you need to assess both the lone pairs on the central atom and the bonds every single time. And sometimes you can start with just the fact that, ah, there's no lone pairs. And all of my bonds are the same. And it's non-polar. And you're done. Or other times, you can assess and say, ah, I have lone pairs on the central atom and they don't cancel. And that's polar. And you're done. But other times, you have to walk through it and say, well, there's no lone pairs on the central atom. What kind of bonds do I have? And I have both non-polar bonds and polar bonds. It's polar overall. So that is a lot of why this topic is in depth is because it's not as straightforward as some of the other components that you all have looked at. So the fact that you have to look at all of it, you have to consider all of the parts and all of the pieces. And you don't really get to have shortcuts on that. Is, is why this is really not a favorite topic. I'll go ahead and scroll back up. So only one lone pair, definitely polar, bent and T-shaped, also definitely polar. The other ones might be, might not be. You have to analyze it. It just depends. And I know it just depends is not your favorite answer from me, but that, that's what we got. Okay, so that's polarity. Intermolecular forces. So I have some conversations about intermolecular forces. So first of all, truly only three of them. Yes, we can talk about the few other ones that get stuck in here. But I, and actually, I don't want to drop them like that. One moment. Hold on, hold on. Intermolecular forces, true intermolecular forces. As far as our molecules go. So if these are all molecules, this is dispersion forces. So all molecules have dispersion forces. Period. End of story. Period of story. All molecules. So all molecules have dispersion forces. Period. Then in here are going to be, I would need a different color. I'm sorry. It says, this is what happens when I've had a lot of conversations and I'm like, okay. So the first way I explained this was not good enough. So these are going to be polar molecules. And here, polar molecules are going to have dipole-dipole interactions. So polar molecules have dipole-dipole interactions. Period. End of story. If the molecule is polar, then it has an intermolecular force that is dipole-dipole. If it's a molecule, it has dispersion forces, no matter what. End of story. The only special one, then, as far as there's something you have to analyze to figure it out. And granted, you have to figure out that it's polar to figure out if there's a dipole-dipole interaction. But if it's polar, it has a dipole-dipole interaction. Period. If it's a molecule, it has dispersion forces. Yeah, hydrogen bonding. So I'm just going to abbreviate to H-bonding. So H, so hydrogen bonding is a particular type of dipole-dipole interaction. So hydrogen bonding is a very particular type of dipole-dipole interaction. And we'll talk about that. So usually when I talk about intermolecular forces, what I usually have is I usually have something like dispersion forces over here. And all molecules have them. But this is the only thing non-polar molecules have. Only intermolecular force. Non-polar molecules have. And then, and then we can do the whole dipole-dipole versus dipole-dipole. And you have to be a polar molecule for these. And then specific type hydrogen bonds. So as far as dipole-dipole interactions and hydrogen bonding goes, I don't know if you've heard this phrase before, but this comes up usually in geometry classes when you talk about the definition of a square and a rectangle. And the truth is, is that a square is just a really specific kind of rectangle? So all squares are rectangles, but not all rectangles are squares. Because the square is the more specific thing. In a similar way, I'm trying to look for things around me that would be helpful. Don't got it. We could talk about something like a car, and we could say that a car is a thing that helps move people around. But in like things that help people move around, you would have cars and trucks and trains and bicycles and wheelchairs. They all move people. They all help people move around. But a car is one particular kind of a thing that helps people move around. So the car is the more specific thing. So if it's a car, it's a thing that helps people move around. But everything that helps people move around is not necessarily a car. So the hydrogen bond is a very specific type of dipole-dipole interactions. Dispersion forces. We often refer to also dispersion forces as temporary dipoles. And I don't think this helps. But we, but it's true. So let's talk about that word again, dipole. So when we use this word, all we're saying is that there is a difference in electron density. That's all it means for us. So if I have a hydrogen bonded to a fluorine, my fluorine is very electronegative. And if I try to draw the electron density as a red circle or a red blob, there should be way more of my red blob around my fluorine. Because this stuff is my electron density. And I should have way more of it on the fluorine. And I mean, the hydrogen's there. But the fluorine should have way more of that electron density than the hydrogen does. The fluorine is more electronegative. So it's going to pull more of that electron density towards it. Now, my drawing is not very good. And it's not very clear. So that's the reason why we usually just draw an arrow to basically point to where more of the electron density is. So there's basically what looks like a little plus sign on one side. And that is where essentially our partial positive part is. And our partial negative part is on the other side. And our partial negative part is on the other side. So this arrow is what we usually do to refer to as our dipole or our dipole moment. So when we talk about intermolecular forces, now that I've set this up and I said, hey, I have a partial positive charge here and a partial negative charge here. If I had another molecule of the exact same thing, realize that that partial positive on the hydrogen is gonna be attracted to the partial negative of the fluorine. Shouldn't actually draw it in between there, it looks a little weird. But there should be an attraction in between that positive and negative. Now, it is a partial charge and we make a big deal about partial charges because that way we can discern the difference between a sodium ion, which is a whole charge. And something on a molecule that, ah, there's more electron density on one side than the other. It's not really evenly shared. It's different. But those we count as partial charges. So sodium, positive ion, whole charge, cation. But our hydrogen fluoride or hydrofluoric acid, whatever this is supposed to be, will have partial charges. So that's where that dipole moment comes in. So I realize that I still have not talked about how to analyze or rank dispersion forces. So I have not really talked about dispersion forces yet. And I also have not really talked about hydrogen bonding yet. But since it is five o'clock, I want to go ahead and see if there's any questions out in the chat. So let me go ahead and do a call again for questions. I'm just gonna try to do that every half hour. Also, so I don't just completely ramble for too long. So are there any questions so far?
Uh, yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure this, this one's been answered yet because I got on late, I apologize for that. But why is O3 polar? If you're taking question, oh, yeah. Why is O3 polar? Can you go over polarity, hybridization and chapter 12.2? All the content that was covered? And what kind of questions based on this content we could see? Okay, uh, can you do a dipole moment question, shown on question? An example of hybridization?
Okay.
Can you please go over one more example of polarity when it has lone pairs? And can you go over question one and two from the exam three F23, F23? And that seems to be all at the moment.
Great. Alright. So a reminder, I'm always happy to take the questions off of the old exam. Those always go in the follow-up video, just in case somebody hasn't gotten to look at the fall 23 exam yet. So that way they can have, it's kind of the, the no spoiler alert tag. But I will go over those in the follow-up video. So that's why it's got that little like pink dot by it is, is that I'm not ignoring it. But that's, that's gonna go in the follow-up video automatically. So, oh, this is perfect. Somebody wanted to talk about O3 and they wanted an example of polarity with a lone pair. Let's talk about ox, let's talk about ozone then. That's, that's perfect. That's, that's gonna be great for us. Could be great for me at least. So let's go ahead and we'll draw the Lewis structure from scratch. So here's oxygen. And I just covered up the number of valence electrons it has. There's oxygen with the, in group 6A. So oxygen should have six valence electrons times three, since there's three of them. So that's 18. So three oxygens all in a row. No atom left behind, so we just put in two double, single bonds. So that's four electrons. 14 electrons left over, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12. And that leaves me two left over, last two just go on the central atom. But then when you look at this, my central atom here does not have a complete octet. So I need to go ahead and move some electrons to fix that. So then when we fix it, it looks something like this. But I could have put, so now I have a complete octet. It's okay. But I could have put that double bond from the other side, which means this actually has resonance. So a reminder about resonance. Resonance means that while the two Lewis structures that I just drew are the correct Lewis structures and are the correct for resonance, that means that in reality, the reality of this shape looks kind of like this, where really I have one and two, one and a half bonds and a lone pair on my central atom. Now, the thing is, you might notice that I'm not putting in lone pairs on my peripheral oxygens, the two on the outside. And I'm not putting those in because this thing here is not really a Lewis structure. So this thing here is not a Lewis structure. And that's why we don't usually show them off very much. Because whenever you draw those half bonds with those dash bonds, it's really difficult to impossible to demonstrate like how many lone pairs should be on the outside oxygens like. Those can't have expanded octets, that's oxygen. No expanded octets. But also I've just drawn one and a half bonds. So the thing in the box is a valuable mental idea because it does show two bonds that are supposed to be equal, which is resonance. But it fails as a Lewis structure. But I want to go ahead and draw it this way because trying to explain why ozone is polar, it's helpful to remember that my bonds should actually be non-polar. So ozone should actually have non-polar bonds. But it has a lone pair on the central atom. So because of that fact, this structure overall is bent. And it does therefore have a small dipole moment. And therefore it's polar. So this was, this was a while ago. Cause the person that we had this accidental argument with is, is now working in industry. But one year I happened to use ozone as an example of a polar molecule in class. And one of my colleagues used ozone as an example of a non-polar molecule in class on the same day. And we happened to have our faculty meeting with the gen chem team that evening. And Dr. Deekman was like, so I don't know if y'all know that you did this. But I got questions about it. And Dr. Deekman looked it up and it is polar, but it's not very polar. So for those of you that are thinking like, which way does the dipole moment go? Honest to goodness, I don't remember because this thing does have a dipole moment, but it's very small. It's very, very small. Because with those non-polar bonds and with everything being oxygen here, it, it is polar. And especially for the analysis, we would expect y'all to do, we would expect y'all to go ahead and see that bent shape with one lone pair and go ahead and decide that it's polar. So that's how you would do the analysis. He would go ahead and analyze one lone pair on the central atom, polar molecule. But just for the record, for those of you that are looking at it and you're like, are you sure? It's not very polar. It's not very polar because it, it is all oxygens. So it's, it's a near thing. But again, as far as how you analyze the structure, this is for y'all a relatively straightforward. There is a lone pair on the central atom. There's only one lone pair on the central atom. You're gonna say the whole molecule is polar. Okay. So that is O3. And that is polarity with lone pair. Who did that? Okay, so I've been doing polarity. I did polarity already. That was that first thing we did. We were starting to get into this idea that a dipole moment really is just where you have uneven electron density. So that's what this image is supposed to be, a hydrogen bonded to a fluorine with more red trying to demonstrate more electron density and more of that being on the fluorine itself, which is why your fluorine gets the partial negative charge.